Alderman Braithwaite.
Yeah.
Alderman Wynn.
Yeah.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Holmes.
Here.
Alderman Tindham.
Here.
Alderman Grover.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Nine zero.
We have a quorum. Welcome to the Monday, November 26, 2012, meeting of the Evanston City Council. First order of business is the mayor's public announcements and proclamations, and I am delighted to have two career service awards to present today. The first is the City of Evanston presented to Dennis Tossi in recognition and appreciation of 20 years of service in long-term care administration. This is issued in conjunction with Long Term Care Awareness Month 2012. And next, would Charlotte Cohn please come up front? I'll meet you right here. Career Service Award, City of Evanston. Presented to Charlotte Cohn in recognition and appreciation of 40 years of service in long-term care administration. Congratulations.[114.42][114.42](APPLAUSE). And Evanda, did you have something to say?
Sure. Good evening. Ms. Charlotte Cohn of Dobson Plaza has dedicated her life to serving the needs of seniors. Her family was pioneers in the nursing home industry and opened their doors to caring for seniors before the concept of nursing home was familiar. She was raised throughout her childhood in an apartment on the top floor of the first home her family established. She had the unique opportunity to learn about caring for the needs of seniors from both of her parents and the many adopted grandparents who convalesced in their home. This vast wealth of learning, experience, and hands-on training expertly prepared Charlotte for her destined career as an administrator of long-term care. By the time Charlotte had finished her schooling, she was married, starting a family of her own, and working full-time as the administrator of Dobson Plaza. Dobson's accolades as a leader in long-term care have been long recognized by the community and proudly acknowledged by the U.S. News and World Report for their outstanding quality of care, rehabilitation, and leadership. Congratulations for 40 years of service.[197.51][197.51](APPLAUSE).
Alderman Rainey?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to congratulate Charlotte also. Dobson Plaza, as you all may know, is in the Grade 8th Ward, and it is a beautiful facility, and it's always beautifully maintained, and the neighbors are very, very proud of it. And frequently, when you have an institution such as that in a residential neighborhood, there are all sorts of conflicts, but not here. They've only done everything possible to improve it, and thank you, Charlotte.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. And my last announcement, it is, it is Red and White Day in honor of the North Shore Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority. Congratulations, Delta Sigma Theta. City Manager, do you have public announcements?
I do, Madam Mayor. I have a few. First, I'd like to call on Scott Lerner. Scott is the founder and CEO of a company here in Evanston called Solixer. And I made a little bet with Scott that he could come to the city council meeting and talk about his wonderful product once the words "Evanston, Illinois" appeared on it. And I'm happy to report that it now says "Evanston, Illinois" on his cans, which are sold throughout America in Whole Foods and other places. So Scott, thank you for coming, and maybe you could just give a little plug. We're trying with economic development, you know, we're trying to have businesses that use water. While the product is not bottled or canned here in Evanston, we're working and hoping that will happen in the not-too-distant future, but they are based here, and their product now says "Evanston, Illinois" on it. So Scott, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Scott Lerner. I'm the founder and CEO of Solixer. We're located at 940 Pittner Avenue over in the West End. Employ right now about 10 people. We started, over the last three years, as a startup, I actually worked for Pepsi before I started this company, and really wanted actually to locate this in Evanston. Evanston fit the brand that we're trying to create, an all-natural, innovative product that we're sold throughout the country. And we had opportunities to go into the city of Chicago, but I personally chose to locate it here in Evanston. A few of my investors are graduates of Kellogg. We employ interns from Kellogg, so it's a great community. We're extremely happy to be here. The product itself, we call it an all-natural functional drink. We have four different formulas. They contain no sugar added. They're extremely healthy. We sell them throughout Whole Foods Market across the country. We'll be getting into Jewel. We just got into Treasure Island. Pretty much every retailer in the country we aim to be in within the next couple of years. So we're a very well-financed organization that's growing rapidly, and, you know, we continue to want to remain in Evanston and eventually produce our product here and employ people in Evanston, as well as engage in the community. We have some relationships with Y-O-U here, and we do a lot of things at E-T-H-S and throughout the community. So appreciate the support and look forward to a longstanding relationship in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll leave some samples for you, and you can also get them at the Whole Foods in both Evanston locations. There's my plug for tonight.
Alderman Wynn?[423.19][423.19](APPLAUSE).
I just wanted to say, I had a chance to sample one of the flavors just this evening at Whole Foods, and I asked about the name, and you might want to say why, what your name is. I'll tell you what the person who gave me the sample said. She said it was a Soul elixir.
Yeah, it was actually a play on words, in a way, between Soul and elixir, and mashed it together to have a trademark that was ownable and could get the URL and everything, so yeah.
I tried the Awake, and it was very good.
The real question is, did you buy one?[463.00][463.00](LAUGHTER). I had to put you on the spot.
I'll go back.
You can take me a rain. You could give me a rain check.[470.06][470.06](LAUGHTER).
Thank you very much, and we're delighted you're in Evanston.
Next, I'd like to ask Erica Storley, our Citizen Engagement Division Manager, to come up, and Madam Mayor, she has a presentation she'd like to make to you.
Hello, Mayor Tisdale, members of the city council. Clerk Green and Manager Bob Skwitz, my name is Erica Storley, and I'm the Citizen Engagement Division Manager. I'm joined up here by Luke Stowe, our Web Communications Coordinator, and Sue Panarelli, our 3-1-1 Supervisor. I'm pleased and privileged to be here tonight to show our award that we received for becoming a citizen-engaged community. This designation is given out by the Public Technology Institute. We are the only city or county in a population of up to 75,000 people to receive this award this year. The citizen-engaged community designation is given to cities and counties who demonstrate excellence with contact center technology, like our 3-1-1 Center, and using multiple channels to communicate with residents and solve problems, such as our website for people to use for 3-1-1, and our mobile applications, and the several different ways that people can contact us and get their issues resolved. So I'd just like to say thank you to both Luke and Sue, who are integral in us continuing to be successful with the 3-1-1 Center, both online and over the phone, and show our lovely award.[559.91][559.91](APPLAUSE). Just say again that I appreciate all the work that everybody over at the 3-1-1 Center does and continues to do, and that I am also appreciative of all of the residents and visitors who use our service and continue to make it very, very successful. Thank you.
And Erica, you mentioned that we were the only government agency with a population of under 75,000 in the United States to receive this designation. What were the other communities?
Exactly. There were only 16 communities selected, and they include Ann Arbor, Michigan, Buffalo, New York, Winston-Salem, North Carolina, Miami-Dade County, Florida, New York, New York. These are very competitive and well-financed cities, much more so than ourselves, so for us to be in this category is really a privilege.
Well, the three of you deserve a great deal of congratulations, and so do all of our active and engaged citizens. Alderman Burris.
I want to say thank you, and 3-1-1 is, I consistently get positive feedback from people in the 9th Ward about how easy it is, the follow-up, the follow-up email, so thank you so much, and thank you to Mr. Bob Skwitz for pushing us this way. We followed willingly, but thank you for all the work you do and the training for the staff. It makes a huge difference. We appreciate it.
And one last item. Alderman Rainey had asked that we do a outreach for a sort of a focus group on 3-1-1, and we've got two of those scheduled. Erica, could you maybe talk a little bit about those upcoming meetings?
Yes, we're having the first focus group on this Wednesday at 9:00 a.m. at the Levy Center. The public is welcome to attend. We're just going to be taking feedback on how our service is provided and letting residents talk to us about how they think we could improve the service. And the second meeting will be the following week on Wednesday at the fire station from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m., so please join us. We look forward to hearing from you.
The fire headquarters?
Yes.
Great. And what we did is we reached out to our frequent users and invited, gave them personal invitations, and as well as inviting the general public, so hopefully we'll have a good mix of folks there. So thank you, Erica.
Thank you.
Luke. One last item, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I want to show you something that's hard to see without a window, because what this is, is a clang that you put on a window, so it's reversed. It says "Shop Evanston for the Holidays." And so what we are doing this year is a citywide campaign urging all of our residents to shop in Evanston for the holidays. We've made up many of these to put up in business windows all over Evanston. We're asking the various business associations around Evanston to designate Saturday, December 15, as Shop Evanston for the Holidays Day, and so several of the business associations will be having events and offering discounts, other activities on Saturday, December 15. We'll have more information coming up over the next few weeks, and we'll have a presentation at the meeting on December 10. But if anyone is interested in getting one of these clangs, they can call 3-1-1, and we'll make sure that you get them, but we'll have city staff canvassing the businesses over the next several days, and if any members of the council would like one, we'll just pass them around. But I want to thank Johanna Niden and our Economic Development Team, and our real great graphic designer, Maria Villegas, the young woman who did our 150 logo, also did this very colorful logo for Shop Evanston for the Holidays. So our intention is to make this an annual event, to encourage people to spend their money in Evanston, and all the wonderful businesses we have here to buy their presents for the holidays. And Madam Mayor, that concludes my communications.
Thank you. City Clerk, do you have communications?
I have no communications, even, Madam Mayor.
You're not going to show us?
Oh, well.
Come on, City Clerk.
I forgot.
You could do better than that.
My mind. While I was in Springfield, the first week in November, out there for the Township Officials of Illinois, we, the Township of Evanston and myself, received a plaque commemorating the voluntary climate that we have in continuing our education, and it was hereby recommended that we achieve the maximum of 70 hours, but myself had put in 135 hours of educational training for the job of Township Clerk and also City Clerk, and so we were awarded a plaque similar to this. That's all for me this night.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is citizen comments. Please limit your comments to three minutes and give your name and address, and I apologize for anyone's name I massacre. Oh, Betty.
She's late.
Well, I won't massacre your name. Betty Esther is first, then Lilo Schuster and Anderson Castile, 725 Washington Street. Sorry about that.
My name is Betty Esther. I stay at 2113 Evanston, and my friend was nice enough to stay to let me talk, although we went over your meeting. I'm here kind of puzzled. I read through the agenda and was seeing that the budget was proposed for tonight for approval, but when I was going through the agenda and I was looking like A3 dot 3 and A3 dot 2 and reading the background material, and then I got kind of confused because it said, "This is for the 2013 budget." I said, "Okay, we're working, and this is the 2013 year." And then I went back, and when I got to the budget, it said, "This is the proposed budget for 2013." My question is, why are we accepting bids for to spend on spending money that we have not approved, but you will approve tonight? Or are you setting your budget based on what the bids are coming in as? Because it was kind of confusing. So, and especially when you say you had $210,000 for the 2012 budget, and the personal computer you were spending $69,996.45. That was from the 2012. That was from the 2013 budget. So if these two amounts add up to $138,149.69, wouldn't it be logic, if you got a budget of $2,010, then that would take care of this item that you're buying, that you're going to buy next year, from this budget? Or is this not all the money you have? It was kind of confusing. Could not follow it. So how do you budget in spending? You go out and get bid and say, "We're going to use this money from this budget. We're leaving this much left over." So how much is left over in the IT, personal computer equipment budget for 2012 that is going to be added to make up the budget for 2013? These are figures that we need to know, because it's not really clear to me in budgets and things. I follow y'all closely, read the audit ones, so it's not making any sense, and nobody hasn't been able to explain to me to understand it. Not like, but I'll see him tomorrow, and maybe he can help me. Thank you.
City Manager, did you want to answer?
Ms. Esther? I'm happy to answer a little bit right now. The monies that are listed on the agenda when it says the 2012 budget allocation, that's usually a general dollar amount for a variety of purchases throughout the year, and it's been our past practice to let the council know what the total amount in that budget line item is, so that's not just the amount for the purchase that's here, so looking at 8.32, that's just not the amount of money that's available for that purchase, but it's available for other things during the course of the year. As far as your question about adopting the 2013 budget and approving purchases with those dollars tonight, ultimately, the council's approval is the first step in the process. So once the council makes the approval, then the purchase occurs, and then the bills are paid. If the budget is changed and there's not money to make the purchase, then that purchase would not be made.
Well, not only this, but one of them has a contract. You sent an RFIQ out on October the 4th. The contract bid was open October the 30th, and I can't remember whether that was item number... No, it wasn't the washroom. That was a whole nother thing. Anyway.
And Mr. Lyons is here and would be happy to talk more specifics.
Yes.
But you're absolutely correct. If the council doesn't adopt a budget and there's money not allocated, then that money can't be spent.
So, right, but we approved in contract before we adopted a budget. And the next question, how many bathrooms are we doing for the 2012 washroom? That's going to cost us $284,880? How many? Just two?
Mm-hmm. You're shocked as you are.
Yes. And where are the bathrooms?
And Ms. Esther, Mr. Lyons is here and would be happy to fill in more of the details.
Thank you. Next is Lilo Schuster.
Thank you very much. I'm Lilo Schuster. I live at 1738 Chicago Avenue. I'm in the 1st Ward with Judy Fisk, and I'm here today to represent Evanston Community Television. I've been a member for seven years, and it's been a blessing that Evanston has this here in our community. I'm a chiropractor, and I was interviewed about eight years ago by a patient of mine, and when I was on his TV show, I said, "You know, I want to do that." And this was up in Northbrook, and they said, "You can't do it here. You have to do it where you live." So then I called, and I started learning how to edit and learning how to do the portable and then the studio, and it's just been a blessing for me. And then over the last couple of years, I decided to become a lot more active, and I've been on the board. So I've been the Secretary of the Board now for the last couple of years. And anybody who knows, as soon as you start to become a member of the Board is when you really start to know what's going on behind the scenes. So I just wanted to let you know that I really don't want, I want Evanston Community Television to be here for a long time. It's been here for over 27 years. We've been fantastic for the community. We've just moved to a new facility. We've just opened up. A few of you have come to see our new facility, and I just, if you have any questions as to why, I'll just tell you why. One of the reasons is that, from my understanding, is ECTV has always gotten a lot of funding from you. What, $500,000, $300,000, now $100,000? And the mentality was never to do what it takes to create, be more self-sufficient. It might have been talked about, but it never really happened. So what the Board did just recently is to hire two part-timers. Anderson will talk to you in a moment. He's one of the people that we hired. So it would be just specifically to do what it takes to start to get more members, start to get onto the community, talk to people here, create production services, more members, and create more money. Well, we just opened. We did a huge build-out, and then you had to insert everything into the TV station. Then I just helped them do an inventory. So now we've just opened. Now they're going to start to do the phone calls, everything it takes to build ourselves up, so I'm just letting you know that's where we stand. And just to help you understand, get a little bit of perspective, actually I have a Board member here to talk to, to answer any of your questions. So that's why I'm here, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, guys. I'm Anderson. I live at 725 Washington Street. As she said, I'm the new part-timer at Evanston Community Television, and I'm here so you guys can see that I'm representing the new face of ECTV. I know you guys have had that station here for a while, and I can't speak for the past, but I want to say that not only me, but the new people that are involved, and the old people, they are still there. We are all seeing it as an opportunity to deliver something better, to deliver more to our community. So I'm prepared, everybody who's now part of ECTV knows what we can do and what we should not do to achieve that, and we are going to do that. We're going to deliver to our community what a community television should, which is access to education and the channel that will help them project themselves in the market. So we're going to help people not only communicate, but also learn something new so they can use that as a profession, okay? So my name is Anderson. I want you guys to think about if there's going to be a budget cut, or if that's something that you guys can work on to help us. Everything is new. I know you guys have been there. You guys know how new everything are there, so we're moving forward. We want to help the community. We are ready. We have the knowledge. So please, just keep us in mind as a partner for the following year, because we want to deliver something else for the community that I believe we have not, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Junaid Rizki, Fay Kaiser, Padma Rayo, and BK Rayo.
Stopping theft by city employees is not a cost savings. While council members attended a mashup recently, a few citizens attended a budget hearing. An interesting statement was made by staff, that staff provided a cost savings of several hundred thousand dollars by removing non-qualified dependents from the city employees were claiming to the city's medical plan. What is interesting about this, they were, it was stated they are paying the city back. So I'd like to know really where in the budget that's reflected, this payback by the city employees. There was a statement, over 20 non-qualified dependents were removed. Therefore, it appears many staff members were involved in this theft. What is troubling to me, and we still have thieves on staff who are basically handling our tax dollars. Also, since it is not known who was involved in this, this casts a shadow of doubt over every city employee, including elected officials, who for years have taken medical benefits here. It is clear to me all involved in this theft should have been fired. This is not a conflict of interest question for a handpicked committee of the mayors, but a question of why weren't the proper authorities brought in to investigate and possibly prosecute those involved? Who made the decision how to handle this theft? Staff, council, mayor, anybody? It appears to me a number of people knew about this. Some connected with the city tell me it was not such a big deal. I now believe, rather than a few hundred thousand dollars, we could have several million dollars, since this may have gone on for a long time. I have come to these meetings for years and seen incompetence, mismanagement, and waste continuing all the time, and I could speak to many topics many nights, but now theft has been added to this, and it's possible cover-up, and this casts a shadow of serious doubt over the city, the public officials here. Really, an honest accounting needs to occur of this, what happened and why it happened, and it needs to be given to the public. Thank you. And really, not a two-minute statement by anybody up here, but an accounting of really what happened.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, maybe I can add something. Mr. Rizki made lots of comments and accusations. He is correct that during the budget workshop, which was back, I guess, in September, there was a discussion about the audit that we did do of employee benefits. There were several employees that were identified as not being, having dependents that were not eligible. There was a process that was undertaken. There was investigations. There was discipline. These are personnel matters that are not allowable for discussion under the Illinois Open Meeting laws, but again, it was mentioned at this session that Mr. Rizki was at, which was on television, so I don't know that there was a cover-up of any sort, because it was fully discussed, but the matter has been taken care of. There was appropriate discipline. Appropriate investigations were done, and we've moved forward from there.
Thank you. Next is Fay Kaiser.
Hi, everybody. I'm back. I was speaking, I spoke at... Hi. For all those people that I have called, I'm the raving maniac that's been on the phone. I'm Fay Kaiser, and I'm a singing teacher at the Noyes Cultural Arts Center, and I'm going to speak briefly about the Piven expansion. I spoke with the mayor about this, and I've given this a lot of thought, and this is really how I feel about this. I'm a history buff, and the Noyes Cultural Arts Center has stood on that ground at 927 Noyes for 135 years. The whole idea of it being an educated place for education. I came to the Noyes Center in 1982, and it had just turned over from the Noyes Street, I always get to say Noyes Street, the Noyes Elementary School, to the community center, okay? And some people don't even know the history of 927 Noyes. It started as a little log cabin with two rooms in 1845, and my mother used to teach in a one-room schoolhouse, and I have a master's degree in education and voice pedagogy, so I am really closely connected to educators. It was restored in 1892 by Daniel Burnham. There's nothing in the building that says anything about it. There is nothing restored, nothing historically remains there, and it was named after Henry Noyes, who at that time was the president of Northwestern University. And for, until 1976, hundreds of little Evanston children went to this school. And for, until 1976, hundreds of little Evanston children went to this school. And yet, when it turned over into the Noyes Cultural Arts Center, Community Center, nothing remained. There's no historical anything about what it was. Now the Piven Theater wants to come along and drastically change it again. And it will never be the Noyes Cultural Arts Center again. It just won't. Joseph Zandell was the director at that time. He loved the arts. And I love the Noyes Cultural Center. The first time I walked in, I knew that this was a place that artists could come. There was a certain amount of studio space. Everybody was diverse. There was a lot of diversity, dancing, acting, puppeteering, everything. And then slowly, as city managers came and went, mayors came and went, council members came and went, Evanston council members came and went, everyone wanted to change the building. It's not working, it's not working. Something's got to be wrong with the Noyes. It has been standing there for 130 years. It needs a new basement, definitely. These people are breathing in asbestos. Is this the way we treat our artists in Evanston? We do community service. We give back to the community all the time. I spend every Thursday at a nursing home singing, for hours. I give disadvantaged children free scholarships for years.
Ms. Kaiser, I need you to wrap up.
Okay, in a nutshell, we think that the Piven Theater should expand. They should expand, but not at the Noyes. The Noyes stands for a small building with a certain amount of diversity, certain amount of studio space. They are driving tenants out. And if it's a matter of money, Mayor Tiziel, I told you when I met with you, I will ride on that bus to Springfield. I will lobby for money for the basement. I will lobby for the Noyes Cultural Arts Center. Let the Piven Theater go someplace else in Evanston. But we are losing diversity and they want to take over half of the building. And for what? There are going to be people, little artists, that are going to lose their spaces, me, one. But I'm advocating for Joe Zandell, I'm advocating for Daniel Burnham, I'm advocating for Henry Noyes, and I'm advocating for all those little children that went to that building. They want to change the outside, they want to change the inside. It will no longer be the Noyes Center. It will no longer be a Noyes Community Center. It will be the Piven Theater with a few artists hanging on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Padma Rao, 2246 Sherman. My comments were approved by my attorney. Taxpayers may wonder why tax dollars are wasted to defend civil rights violations against minorities. When I point out that irresponsible statements and actions by public officials result in costly lawsuits and court-ordered rewards against the city, this mayor interrupts claiming that I'm out of order. I submit that there is nothing out of order when a taxpayer states that their tax dollars should be spent wisely instead of being wasted to defend unconstitutional discrimination by city officials. In fact, your mayor is out of order every time she interferes with public comment. A federal judge ordered the city to pay over $45,000 in the LaSalvia civil rights case. The complaint in the Davies civil rights case cites your eighth ward member's involvement leading to the litigation. This involvement came after your eighth ward member recorded her animus against Viola in the public record for the August 8, 2011, AMPW committee meeting, resulting in Viola filing a lawsuit against the city. I submit that taxpayers should not be forced to pay for recuperation by public officials. Stop violating taxpayers' constitutional rights or pay for the resulting lawsuits yourselves. The city holds out the videos of its meetings to be the official verbatim record. But the video for your October 1 council meeting is defective as it omits the sound for most of public comment as well as the images for part of it. Instead of correcting the defective record, your city clerk said at your October 22 council meeting that he talked to outside lawyers and refuses to make the record complete. Taxpayers may wonder how many tax dollars those outside lawyers cost, why the city's salaried lawyer was not competent to answer the question, and why tax dollars are spent to ensure that the public record is inaccurate. I believe that taxpayers deserve to know what happens at city meetings instead of being misled with faulty records. I submit that it's obscene for you to stuff yourselves with pizza at taxpayers' expense before every meeting when taxpayers are struggling to keep their homes and feed their families. You can afford to buy your own food, but you force taxpayers to fund your pizza palace and then mistreat taxpayers at your meetings. Stop eating tax dollars and pay for your own pizza. At your October 22 and November 12 meetings, your mayor allowed a white man to speak both for himself and again for an absent person. But your mayor angrily forbids me and mom from doing exactly the same thing. At your August 13 meeting, your mayor allowed a white woman to speak at length about Kendall. But your mayor attacks us and turns off our microphone when we discuss the same Kendall issue. Such anti-first amendment discrimination against minorities with darker skin has no place in the civilized world. Undo your vote at Kendall sentencing over two dozen mature trees to death for no reason and endangering pedestrians with an alley that dumps traffic onto the narrowest street. Protect the trees and pedestrians at Kendall as the city code requires. Some of those trees are older than Evanston. Protect the Kendall trees.
Thank you.
Is the microphone on?
Yes, it is.
BK Rao, 2246 Sherman Avenue. My comments were reviewed by my attorney. While the city is celebrating its 150th birthday, it should also think of what the city council has accomplished in the last four years. The Emerald Ash Borer's presence in the city was reported to the council several years ago. I believe that any city that claims to be a Tree City USA would have taken steps to save the ash trees from the pest. But this council's decision to do nothing resulted in ash tree stumps all over the city. I don't think the city deserves the title Tree City USA. Lately, your first ward alderman started talking about her concern for trees and birds at Northwestern University. These statements came from the same person who spearheaded the Kendall College re-subdivision that involves killing more than 24 trees, some of which are older than the city.
Ms. Rao, we have been over this for two years now and your comments are out of order.
Don't interrupt, you're out of order. Let her speak.
I am running this meeting, you are not.
These statements-
Being a dictator doesn't mean that you're allowed to transgress into public comment. It is public comment. She's stating her opinion.
These statements came from the same person who spearheaded the Kendall College re-subdivision that involves killing more than 24 trees, some of which are older than the city. I think that is nothing more than hypocrisy. Well, hypocrisy and wasting taxpayers' money to defend discrimination lawsuits are some of your so-called achievements. I don't think you should celebrate until you learn to pay for your own pizza and stop using your money to support your pet projects like a wine and cheese bar and defending your wrongdoings in the court. It is easy to sell the trees at Kendall and everywhere in the city. And I shall return.
Thank you. That concludes public comment. Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent agenda?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Consent agenda. First item is approval of minutes of the council meeting of October 29 and the minutes of the special council meeting of November 10. The Administration Public Works Committee met this evening and requests your approval of the payroll through November 4 in the amount of $2,658,036.06. The city bills through November 27 in the amount of $4,419,784.06. The committee requests your approval of a contract with G.A. Johnson &amp; Sons for the 2012 washroom renovation project at the Civic Center in the amount of $284,880. Approval is also requested for sole source purchase of server and storage hardware, licensing and related installation services from Dell in the amount of $138,149.96. We ask your approval also of contracts for water treatment chemicals to the following vendors in the amount of $192, I'm sorry, to Usalco in the amount of $192,330.40 to supply aluminum sulfate, to Alexander Chemical Corp. in the amount of $40,714 to supply chlorine, to Alexander Chemical Corp. in the amount of $161,700 to supply HFS acid, which is fluoride, to BASF Corporation in the amount of $30,400 to supply polymer, Pristine Water Solutions in the amount of $107,070 to supply blended phosphate. The total of these purchases is $532,214.40. We ask your approval for a sole source purchase also of a Cargill model ABS II automated brine maker from EG Equipment, not to exceed the amount of $88,000. We ask your approval of this A35, Madam Chairman, is off the consent agenda, right?
It's off the agenda.
Off the agenda altogether.
It's off the agenda altogether and will be discussed by the committee chair. The next item, the First Bank and Trust of Evanston for Banking Services is also off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. Approval is requested to authorize the manager to execute change order number one granting a time extension of 121 calendar days to the agreement with Allen Integrated Control Systems for the water utility system upgrade. No additional funding will be required for the change order number one, has to do with discovering unknown conditions. Next, A5, we ask your approval to adopt Resolution 73R12, releasing closed session minutes listed on Exhibit A in your packet and finding that a need still exists for confidentiality as to the minutes on Exhibit B. We ask your approval for the adoption of Resolution 81R12, which amends license agreement with Sprintcom, Inc. for the installation of additional underground connections to the existing monopole at the Fleetwood Jordane Center. No funding is required for this. Next, we ask your approval to adopt Resolution 82R12, which has to do with agreements with the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District of the Greater Chicago and the Skokie Park District to establish a construction yard on property owned by the MWRDGC and leased to the Skokie Park District in conjunction with bid 12153 Cleveland and Davis Street, the large diameter sewer rehab project. No fees involved in this either. Next, we ask your approval for the, let's wait, Ordinance 106012 is for introduction, which amends Title 10 Motor Vehicle and Traffic Chapter 6 illegally parked or abandoned vehicles, which will allow the city, under contract, to ticket and tow cars or vehicles in fire lanes on private property. The next three are off. A4, A5, what?
A9, 10, and 11.
Oh, okay, wait. Okay. A9, 10, and 11 are off the consent agenda. Okay, now we're going on to planning and development, is that correct? Planning and Development Committee met this evening, that was an exciting meeting. And the Zoning Board of Appeals and city staff and the committee recommend introduction of Ordinance 138012, which grants a special use permit for the operation of an automobile service station and a variance for 19-foot accessory structure canopy height at 2400 Main Street. That is for introduction. Next, under Human Services, I'm going to take that off the consent agenda, H1, that'll be addressed by the committee chair, the Human Services Committee Chair. For action, the committee, Human Services recommends and staff recommends approval of Ordinance 111012, establishing the Americans with Disability Act Advisory Board to assist the city of Evanston with prioritizing ADA issues and infrastructure improvements. Next, under Appointments, for appointments to the Arts Council, Jo Ailman, Fran Joy, and Rena Gitlin. To the Civil Service Commission, Deana Byrne and Lynn Richmond. Environment Board, Stephanie Brown and Tom Clark. Commission on Aging, Marcia Achenbach, Yolanda Bender and Bonnie Lockhart. Housing and Homelessness Committee, Jeremy Spitzer. Mental Health Board, Carolyn Bell and Azar Harris. These are for action. Madam Mayor, with that, I complete the consent agenda and move approval.
Second. Thank you, Alderman Rainey. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to zero, the consent agenda passes. Alderman Grover, would you walk us through Administration and Public Works?
Yes, I will. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Agenda item A3.5 has been deferred to the committee's next meeting on December 10. I move approval of A3.6, which is a contract with First Bank and Trust of Evanston for Banking Services to include city payroll accounts payable and cash management functions.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Alderman Wilson?
And the reason I had this taken from the consent agenda is because I'm going to recuse myself from the vote due to pre-existing business relationships that I have with certain other respondents to the RFP.
Thank you. So I think that we're ready to vote then. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Eight.
Eight to nothing, the motion passes.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of downtown Evanston's fiscal year 2013 request for budget contribution with the amendment proposed by, approved by the committee. The amendment has to do with the funding mix. Instead of $370,000 from the Special Service Area Number 4, $113,000 from the Economic Development Fund, and $88,247 split evenly between the Washington National TIF and Economic Development, the Administration and Public Works Committee proposes the same $370,000 from SSA 4. And instead of the $113,000 coming from Economic Development Fund, it would instead come from the Washington National TIF. And the remaining $88,247 would still be split between the Washington National TIF, but in the amount of $50,000 from the TIF and $38,247 from the Economic Development Fund.
Thank you.
Did you follow me?
Second. Yes, I think so. It's been moved and seconded to approve the Downtown Evanston Fiscal Year 2013 request for budget contribution share as amended. Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can I just have an explanation from the committee discussion about why you made that decision?
The impetus for this was because the Washington National TIF does indeed have the funds to support downtown Evanston and because there are significant other needs for economic development funds outside of our established TIF districts, that this would be a better allocation of those funds to support downtown Evanston. And the total amount does not change, by the way, $571,247. We also understood, talking to Mr. Lyons, that the amount that's been requested by downtown Evanston could change depending upon where the revenue comes in from the SSA. So if that revenue changes, this is what we discussed at the Economic Development Committee, they may not need the additional support from the Washington National TIF, that $113,000. hundred thirteen thousand dollars.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes?
I voted no on this because I feel that there ought to be a split, and the Washington National TIF does not cover all of the downtown, although a larger part. Almost pointed out to me that it does cover a larger part of it, but I still think that economic development dollars should be spread throughout the community, and that includes the downtown area. So I just think it's a fair way to do it.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Madam Mayor, we did inquire as to the fund balance in that fund, in the Washington National TIF, and we understand that not all of the area is in the Washington National TIF, but the money can be dispersed in such a way as the Washington National TIF can take care of. There is five million dollars with a balance, I think, of two or three million of unassigned, undesignated cash there. And that's what, that's what TIFs are for, to create economic development, and that's why we did that.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just feel uncomfortable making a decision like this at a Committee meeting. We have talked over the past months about the balance that's in the Washington National TIF and about various infrastructure improvements that need to be done and are planned to be done in the downtown, and so I'm just not comfortable with making, making this decision at this moment and reallocating the funds in that way. So I'll be voting no.
Thank you. I think that concludes discussion of approval of the Downtown Evanston Fiscal Year 2013, request for budget contribution share. City Clerk, would you, it's been moved and seconded to approve it as amended. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes, Alderman Burris.
Yes.
Alderman Fisk.
No.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
No.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Seven to two.
Seven to two, the motion passes. Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move approval of Resolution 83R-12, adopting our Fiscal Year 2013 budget for the City of Evanston in the amount of two hundred forty-seven million, three hundred fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred seventy-seven dollars.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the budget. Does anyone want to comment on it? Seeing no lights for discussion, City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
In following Alderman Burris's lead, aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to zero, the motion passes.
Finally, from Administration and Public Works, Madam Mayor, Ordinance 127012, amending our city code with regard to water charges, rates, fees, and penalties, comes to the City Council, but on a one to four vote without the recommendation of Administration and Public Works for the recommended three percent water rate increase. But the Committee wanted this to be considered by the full City Council.
Thank you.
And I will move approval of Ordinance 127012, which includes the three percent water rate increase.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the ordinance. Does anyone want to discuss it? Alderman Rainey?
Well, I, I was one of the voted, those that voted no with hesitation, and I think it would be a good idea, given that we're now in council, to have staff make a short presentation.
All right. Alderman Grover, did you want to speak first?
No, I just wanted to add that this is for rate increase that is not needed until July 1st, 2013, and just a reminder from the packet materials that this is, we still have the lowest water rates than any of our neighbors and other municipalities in the Chicago area.
Thank you. City Manager?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I think what I took away from the discussion at the Committee was a larger question, and that was the feeling of many Evanston residents that their quote-unquote "water bill" continues to go up, and the quote-unquote "water bill" is a water bill, it is a sewer bill, and it is a refuse recycling bill. And as people see adjustments to any one of those areas, they complain that our water rates are too high because we apparently don't do a good enough job in that document, I think, explaining to people what the various component parts are. There was some discussion at the Committee that in the past there were separate bills that, at one point, I think Alderman Rainey had mentioned, when the windowed envelopes became something that were readily available, then with technology, the bills were kind of solidated, and it was an efficiency point. And certainly, I hear the concerns of the Committee. On the one hand, yes, we do have very low water rates, our sewer rates are perhaps higher than some, we approach funding infrastructure differently than some communities. There was also discussion in the Committee about the role of the property tax and how property tax pays for some refuse services in some communities, some sewer services in some communities, and the mix is just a little bit different here. I'm certainly committed, based on the discussion in the Committee, to go back and look at our bill format. We were already looking at it. I reminded the Committee that we had a study done by the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning several months ago, and one of the recommendations they made on water conservation was for us to look at our bill and make some adjustments as it dealt with consumption issues. We can certainly look as we're making those adjustments on how the costs are built. But, you know, certainly as your City Manager, I feel very comfortable with the investments we're making in our water utility. We're probably still not making all the investments we should, but we're trying to balance available cash with the appropriate amount of debt for the enterprise. So I would encourage the Council, this is part of a three-year plan that you adopted three years ago, of three sets of rate increases we have recommended putting off, the increase that the Council originally agreed to three years ago, that would have been a January 1 increase, put it off till July 1, basically to take some of the additional money that was raised by the very warm summer, to put it toward the money that would have been raised by the revenue, the rate increase for those six months. But we think we're being smart about it, and I heard the Committee loud and clear that we need to do a better job of informing our residents, one, that we are being smart about it, and that the fees on their bill go to multiple things, not just water.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to comment? Seeing no lights, it's been...
Could Steph just mention the impact this percentage would have on the average water bill? I think that's some important information.
The impact, I'll ask Mr. Stonebeck to come up. The total dollars raised are modest. Mr. Stonebeck, what would a three percent increase for the mythical average water rate be?
For the average user, it uses approximately eighty-six thousand gallons a year. The rate would increase by approximately six dollars, their annual payment would be increased by six dollars. So you get billed six times a year, it's about one dollar every two months.
And that, and that, I think there was also comments at the Committee that, that our average water user, which is really an arithmetic average, we take the number of customers divided by the number of, amount of water sold, so, and we will, we'll also work on perhaps some better models of, you know, a family, two, a family of four, maybe a family of six, living in a, in various circumstances, and come up with the water rates for that, because that will be a different kind of average water user versus an arithmetic average. So that arithmetic average, I think the feeling was, on many members of the Council, was a, was a large number, so if you feel that's a large number at a dollar every two months, then it would be something less if you use less water than that in your own household. So we'll also work on coming up with more typical household numbers as far as water usage is concerned.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes?
City Manager, I think it's probably also important to mention that this will not have an impact on the sewer bill, because the sewer bill is what I think most of us, at least for me, complaints that you get, what you get about the water bill, but it's the sewer bill that's so expensive each month.
And that's all correct.
And the sewer rate has not been raised since 2004.
Alderman Burris?
How much would we have to find in the city budget if we didn't do the three percent?
Eighty-four thousand dollars.
Eighty-four thousand?
Yes.
Okay, and what would we not be able to do that you have planned to do with the eighty-four thousand?
It would be a tough decision on what to make of that in our capital improvement program, which is where the majority of the money goes. There's the only project, well, there's one project for eighty-five thousand dollars that could be deferred, and that was an engineering study to design the rate and flow, loss of head trans, transmitters, so either that or some of the seasonal positions may not be hired.
And Alderman Burris, our other larger concern is that we start to lose that momentum of regular increases at smaller amounts, which then make the need for larger increases over time. And I think we're more, probably more concerned about that than we are the actual dollars and cents lost in any given year. The Council has been inconsistent over an extended period of time with how those rates have been adjusted, and I think what we've heard from you is that you would rather have a flatter line or a more predictable line of rate adjustments, rather than saying no adjustments over a given period of years, but gosh, now we've got to spike it up over a very short period of time. So what we're trying to do is we're trying to be mindful, the Council spent a fair amount of time over the last couple of years looking at sort of the longer-term trend lines, you know, how we balance water debt versus sewer debt, and how as sewer debt is going to be finally coming off our books, then we are going to need to make additional investments on the water side. So that, that is also our concern, because if there is not the increase now, we would likely come back to you twelve months from now with an even larger increase than we think might be necessary, just to try to make up the difference as we move into a need for additional dollars for water capital improvements over the next five or 10 years.
And as we're hoping to make money from water, it would, I think, be an unwise move to skimp on infrastructure. Seeing no further lights for discussion, it's been moved and seconded to approve Ordinance 127012, amending the Evanston City Code, City Waterworks System Charges, Rates, Fees, and Penalties. City Clerk would, oh, it's only for introduction. City Clerk, you can call the roll.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to zero, the motion passes. Let's see, Alderman Fisk, you have nothing to report from Planning and Development, congratulations. And Alderman Holmes, Human Services.
Ordinance 117-0-12, amending the Evanston City Code to make certain changes in the Evanston Public Library Board's authority. The Human Services Committee and staff recommend consideration and approval of Ordinance 117-0-12. This ordinance was approved by the Human Services Committee on November 5th, 2012, and introduced at the City Council Meeting on November, on November 12th, 2012. I would move approval.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the ordinance. Is there any discussion?
Alderman Rainey?
Madam Mayor, I'm voting no on this because I object to the entire concept of the Library Board being a taxing body without representation.
Okay.
Thank you.
I am totally in support of a library district where people are elected and make those decisions.
Thank you for that explanation. It's been moved and seconded to approve Ordinance 117012, amending the Evanston City Code to make certain changes to the Evanston Public Library Board's authority. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Burris.
No.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
No.
Seven to two.
Seven to two, the motion passes. That concludes the agenda and brings us to Call of the Wards. Alderman Burris.
No report.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tuesday, December 4th, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m., the First Ward Meeting at the Evanston Public Library. Hope you'll all be there.
Thank you. Alderman Braithwaite.
No report.
Thank you. Alderman Wynn.
No report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson?
I'd just like to make a reference to the Planning and Development Committee to consider revisions to the occupancy code. I'll submit some thoughts I have on that to the City Attorney and to the City Manager's office, that request that be included in a January agenda.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, can, Alderman Wilson, can we discuss as far as which meeting in January? Are you looking at a specific meeting?
I'm not looking at the calendar.
14 or 28?
14 is fine.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson, and thank you for your work on this. Alderman Holmes?
I'm sorry.
Call of the wards.
Oh, no, no report, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Alderman Holmes. Alderman Tindham?
No report, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Grover?
No report.
And Alderman Rainey?
Madam Mayor, I have no report, but I'd like to make a referral to Administration and Public Works Committee, and that is to consider changes to the five percent advantage for Evanston contractors, for projects. The point I want discussed is the threshold for creating that five percent advantage. And I just want to explain to you one, one reason for that, if I could, just quickly.
Right ahead.
And that is, that is if, if a project is two million dollars, and an Evanston contractor can bid a hundred thousand dollars over a Chicago contractor, a suburban contractor, and still get that bid if all other conditions were the same, and that, that becomes costly on city projects. So I think the point of having the five percent was to give the little guys and girls a better opportunity. They're not bidding on the two and three and four million dollar projects, they're bidding on the lesser ones. So that's why I'd like to see the threshold discussed.
Thank you for that explanation, that helped. All right, that concludes Call of the Wards. Alderman Wilson, do you have a motion?
I do. Pursuant to 5 Illinois compiled statutes, ILCS 120/2A, I move that the City Council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding litigation, collective bargaining in minutes. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. These exceptions are 5 ILCS 120/2A, C-2, C-11, and C-21.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
15 to 26.
Good thing you don't like it.
Make it through.
So this is better having respect for your audience. Now, by the way, you have to show if, I don't, to me, there's nothing that's off limits if there's a point of view. And I'm including everything. There is nothing that's off limits if it serves a purpose. If it doesn't serve a purpose, if there isn't a legitimate target, if there isn't a legitimate reason for doing it, then it's superfluous, insulting, and it's wrong.
And you know what else it is? Not that those are not bad enough, superfluous, insulting, and wrong. I mean, I can see Romney wearing a pin like that or something, or somebody else, if you don't take that point of view. It's also lazy, I think.
Totally lazy. The, as lazy...